All right, let's call committee of the whole to order. First, I'll move to approve the minutes of our November 6th meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And next, I'd like to visit ordinance 13-2023A regarding the 12900 Madison Avenue parcel. The assumption that Director Lineiger, you're gonna help begin the discussion here on that.
Good evening, Council President, members of the committee. So I'll get the conversation started. We do have representatives from LCSC here in the audience to help answer questions as well, to help give some color as to some information that they had shared with all of City Council about the reasons for the change. But in short, just to go back in time to explain where we are, I think it was in July, I don't have the communication from, maybe it was in July, City Council authorized the administration to enter into a contract for the, with LCSC for the purchase of the youth division building at 12900 Madison Avenue. That contract that was, the draft that was attached that spelled out a number of different things, including a purchase price. The purchase price at that time, based on LCSC's review of the property and proposal for the property, was $200,000. The other elements that were in that contract also set out how they would go through and do some additional due diligence of the property, just to help confirm that everything makes sense for the purchase price they had offered, that the building is everything that they expected it to be. They did that. They had a company go through, as just like we do for our homes that we buy and sell, they do that for commercial property, really at a much greater detail, though. And they go through every system in the building, every structural component of the building, and they give a very detailed report back out. When LCSC received that list of items, there are certainly a number of things on that list that were gonna be things that they were aware of, things that they would be addressing as part of the renovation of the building, the rehabilitation of the building. There were, however, a number of things that were beyond what they could assess visually, going through the property and doing their inspections, things that were beyond what they had contemplated as part of the renovation, rehabilitation, and as such, they asked for the city to consider a reduction in the price. As we noted, there were $116,600 worth of items that the LCSC asked for the city to provide a dollar-for-dollar adjustment for. We ultimately arrived at a number of $70,000 reduction in the price for a revised purchase price of $130,000. That's the substitute that's in front of you today. That's the only change that's being requested from the purchase agreement. Certainly, I can answer any questions, but then if Ms. Rooney and their board chair are here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's presence this evening. I think my first question personally is, in the review, does the city have any aspects of that review that they contest, question, et cetera?
Yes, there were a couple of items in that $116,600 that we contested. Unfortunately, I grabbed the wrong sheet as I came up here. There was, I believe, $12,000 of items that we thought were either something that should have been plainly visible to them as they did their walkthrough, or at least there was enough of an awareness that should have been factored into the offer price. There were a couple other things, like recertification of the fire system, certification tags for some of the fire extinguishers. There was a total of $2,000 that, those are just things that are part of the ongoing maintenance of a building like this. But yeah, there was about $12,000 of items that were in that list that we felt were something that they should have been aware of as they did their walkthrough. So that reduced the ask amount to $104,600.
Okay. And I guess for me, $12,000 falls within the range of a buyer and seller, you know, disagreeing over thises and that's. Let's not let, you know, little things get in the way of big things, I guess. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Director Lineiger before we perhaps turn it over to Trish Rooney with any additional feedback she'd like to provide? Councilman Rader?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one sort of process question, and do correct me if this is like off-base, because it could be, but I think it's worth asking. So this new information in the department's sort of estimation, this new information, had we had it earlier on, if the price of the building were different, would it have substantially changed our decisions in who received that, won the bid to renovate and own the property?
So it wouldn't have changed any decisions as far as the ultimate outcome of that RFP process. It would have probably helped inform decisions early, at the beginning of the process, rather than now towards the back end, if the city would have gone out and conducted these inspections in advance of listing the property for sale, which in commercial real estate isn't that uncommon. It was the process that we were going through. We simply decided not to incur that expense on the city's end, because even when you do that, there's still gonna be, the buyers are also gonna go back and do some check of that. So I don't believe it would have, it would not have changed any of the process that we went through. It may have helped inform the process.
Because I'm riffing off you here, but maybe because had the other applicant been successful, they would have done the same process and gotten to the same point right now, and they would have been able to save the same amount of money, and thus, it's still a fair process from the beginning.
Well, and keep in mind, too, the other applicant offered a significantly lower price even then at this negotiated, renegotiated price, where we're still five, over five times more than what the other asking for price.
And I really appreciate that. Just when we see these changes, or I do, I just wanna make sure the process is seen by the outside, and all that participated, and it continues to be fair, and I think it is. So, thank you, Mr. Lineiger.
Director, I hate looking into the past too far if we don't have to, but I do wanna acknowledge what I think I'm hearing, and that, given the current criteria situation, et cetera, we may not have needed an RFP, given what we know now.
I think we still need an RFP to come, to solicit proposals from, remember, we did two RFP processes. I think we still need an RFP to get to selecting LCSC. I think that was still a fundamental thing that we needed.
Allow me to say this another way. Has the criteria changed to a point where the RFP we would have put forward would have only had one applicant?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, I do not believe that would have changed, that we'd only have one applicant.
Okay.
We'd still have, we'd still have two applicants. It would just be more, it would have been more informed upfront.
Understood.
Proposal process.
And are there some, we purchased this building in the early 80s, something to that effect?
It was actually the early 90s, early, I think it was 92.
Okay. And that was through CDBG funds?
It was.
Does that constrain our ability to sell this property?
To an extent. The only constraint we have is when the proceeds that we receive need to go back into the CDBG account as program income.
But that does not constrain the amount for which we can sell the property, or does it?
If we were to accept less than, so we bought the property for $125,000 using the CDBG fund, so if we were to accept anything less than $125,000, Dan Wyman, our development officer, believes that we may actually have to supplement the CDBG account for selling the building. So let's say we sold it for $120,000, we'd actually have to utilize $50,000 of the city's own funds to reimburse the CDBG account.
Understood, understood. All right. Any questions, colleagues, further for Director Lineiger, acknowledging that you may come up with some as we go forward?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Bullock?
I'm just, I wanna make sure I'm clear if there's a recommended path forward from the perspective of the administration, or have we not gotten that far?
I think we're contemplating an offer, in a sense, at this stage.
Okay.
An offer to renegotiate, in a sense.
Okay. But, you know, I look forward to the rest of the discussion. I just didn't know if...
I think the sale price may potentially change, and that's what we're here to discuss.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Director Lineiger, anything else to add before we perhaps turn it over to any members of the administration or Director Rooney?
Mr. Chairman, I worked on this project here with Director Lineiger, and a couple things I wanna point out, that if this price is to be accepted by council, this is still scheduled to close, the transaction's scheduled to close this calendar year. So if it's approved by council at the next meeting, then we would proceed to close at that price in this amendment.
Thank you. Understood. And is it desirable and advantageous in any way for it to close this year versus next year, et cetera?
I think the idea was to get this off the city's books, into their hands, so they can proceed to develop the property and get it up to use for the programs they intend to run there. So I think sooner the better in that respect, and it carries out the intended purpose of the original agreement.
Sure. And I don't speak for LCSC, but my understanding would be that you would wanna move forward as quickly as possible? Any further, okay. Executive Director Rooney, would you like to come up and answer any questions we may? And/or your board chair?
I don't have many more comments. If I'll answer any questions you might have. And Brian is our board treasurer, and Brian's a professional position is with a company called GBX, which, if you wanna explain to the council how you picked partner.
Sure. So my name is Brian Capelli. I am in my day job. I'm president of real estate with a firm called GBX Group. We are a real estate investment management firm focused on historic properties and historic preservation. So we are involved with a number of projects across the country in the historic space. I recommended Partner Engineering and Science to LCSC. They're a firm that we use across the country. They've done a very good job for us. These property condition assessments are very common in commercial real estate transactions. As I think somebody mentioned earlier, it's, you know, very prudent for a purchaser or a lender to conduct these assessments, so they understand the transaction that they're getting into. Partner completes these assessments according to the American Society for Testing and Maintenance 2018-15, which is, as many of you may be familiar with, the ASTM standard, changes from time to time, but it's basically a standard-setting organization in the United States. They're following the standard for property condition assessments, and that's what they did in this report that we engaged them for. It was not only a property condition assessment, but also lead-based paint and asbestos-containing material report that we engaged them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Colleagues, any questions for the representatives of LCSC? In general, are you supportive of the ordinance as written?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess there's no other questions.
Thank you, Council President, council members.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Trish? You sure? Pardon?
I'm excused also, am I?
Yes, unless you have anything to add.
No. Well, the only thing that, when we talk about the end of the year, we do have to move the pantry. I think you probably recall, this is a two-property, and that work, we're spending that money to start over there on 117th. So the longer we're stuck where we are and paying a mortgage and redoing 117th, it's just onerous for us.
Is it fair to ask in this forum, and you can say no, the details of your current and long-going address and residence, and in terms of lease and staying there as needed and things like that? I know it's been a challenging situation up to this point.
It's not fixed, if that's what you're asking. It's slowly but surely moving through a six-page report that she got from the building department, and it's going slowly, but it's certainly not repaired. And the pantry, with the number of people we're delivering, we did 3,600 deliveries last month, that pantry space just isn't big enough for us anymore. So that piece has to happen as soon as it can.
Sure. Okay. Colleagues, anything else to add? Any questions? Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Trish, for coming. I would be in favor of moving this forward as quickly as possible, so they can complete the facility and start serving the community as they can in a new space with a new pantry. So I'd be in favor of moving this forward quickly.
Colleagues, anything else to add?
Mr. Chair? Councilman Bullock?
Me too, just exactly what the Councilwoman Marks said. We should move as quickly as prudent to move, and if we're approaching consensus, I welcome that news.
All right. Well, you're all in luck, 'cause we're about to vote on it. I'll move to recommend adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And we still have 11 minutes left on our docket with two more agenda items to go. We'll take a little extra time. Thank you to both of you for coming. I appreciate you being here. I think I'd like to move next to the Charter Review Commission and discussion of potential appointees there. Colleagues, did you have any thoughts or feedback on potential appointees? I open that up to the administration as well, if there's any recommendations.
I had asked a few folks. I have a name I can put forward if we're ready for that, but I am also willing to, sort of, if there's a process, you wanna do this, that's better than just shouting out names. I will certainly...
Sure. I have to defer to our expert council office on if there's been any interested applicants and things like that. Councilman Bullock?
Yeah, I appreciate the process here. I would welcome, pardon me, the time to continue developing or getting in new applicants. I haven't had the chance to hear back from all the people I'd liked to just yet. So that's not to undermine or sway on anybody else's, but just, I'm hoping for, there'll continue to be opportunity to get in some quality applicants on this and some of the others.
Sure. I know that, thank you, I know that Councilman Baker had a recommendation as well, but couldn't be here tonight. And not knowing what we'd get to and what we wouldn't this evening, you know, I think hoped for a little more deliberation on the part of council.
Certainly, and I've got one other thought or point, and that is, it seems, first of all, like it's not that long ago when we went through this before, I think you and Councilwoman Marks might remember that. I also recall that the work of the Charter Commission at the time was heavily supported by the Department of Law. I don't know if the Department of Law or the George administration's gotten as far as thinking through what this round, what list of issues this round might address in the charter. Maybe it's nothing, maybe it's small things, maybe it's waiting for the Charter Commission, the citizens on the Charter Commission itself to put forward some concepts. But I recall last time, there were a series of cleanup items. It was a pretty significant rewrite or update the last time. But I ask because that scope of work, or that anticipated scope of work, could shape perhaps the kinds of candidates that council may wanna consider for, or maybe not at all. I, you know, I don't know. But if there was something, I guess if there was something specific, we might wanna ensure certain skillsets were represented in our appointees. I just...
No, understood, Councilman. I appreciate that. I think that, you know, the potential is there for these to be some of the most important appointments that we make as a council. We're talking about our city's constitution, essentially, and we wouldn't wanna take that lightly, and we certainly wanna take into account the skillsets necessary to approach that important role in the correct way. I'd be interested in hearing from the administration, the law department, on their thoughts on the matter of our Charter Review Commission.
Yeah, I can answer that. And that is a question, as I'm looking at people from my appointments that have asked, you know, what kind of time commitment are we looking at? And my response has been, as thorough as it was done previously, we have the third amended charter, I'm not anticipating anything too major. But, you know, as the process unfolds, you know, someone may discover a topic that we may wanna dig into. But that's my cursory review, and in discussion with both Director Vargo and Assistant Director Swallow, who's obviously been through a few of these, that's kind of the take on our end, that it's not gonna be the massive overall we saw last time. But again, things are subject to change. And the other thing I just wanted to add, hearing some of the dialogue, we'd be more than happy to do a posting on our social media for, call for applicants for this particular commission. That sometimes helps, you know, get more people applying, so we can do that as well.
I would, thank you, Mayor. I would agree with the notion of opening it up to the community to the extent we can, and sharing in that pool of applicants with shared goals, I think, in just terms of approaching this thoroughly and thoughtfully as we go forward. I can't remember if this is something we have any power to control now, or if it's solely for the Charter Review Commission. I know there were recommendations on salaries and things like that, and as the sole person around here elected who doesn't have any political ramifications for talking about salaries, I'd be curious of how the mechanics of adjusting salaries for both mayor and council would proceed, if there was any, and I'm looking at Director Vargo a little bit, even though we haven't really primed this discussion about...
So I can take...
Where our control is on that front. Mayor, go ahead.
So if you recall, and I believe it's the charter that dictates this, the Civil Service Commission will review the salaries and make a recommendation to City Council. That is typically the year before the presidential, or the year of the presidential election, so that's something our Civil Service Commission will be doing next year, making that recommendation. And so that'll be presented to you as it was in 2020, and then council will deliberate from there.
I just recall some recommended adjustments for the next term for council and mayor, and I just couldn't remember what the mechanics of implementing that were.
Yeah, it was recommended to City, or the Civil Service Commission makes the recommendation to City Council, and then you guys had your process from there.
And for me, for not knowing this, when does the Civil Service Commission meet again, or is it just as needed?
Civil Service meets monthly. So we'll be talking with the Civil Service Administrator to remind them that this is occurring, so that they can begin to solicit information on other municipalities and their salary structures. So that'll be how, through our, so basically through our law department, we'll communicate through Civil Service that this needs to happen again this year.
Okay. I, not knowing really what the strength of it is, I may make some recommendations, again, from the perspective of someone who doesn't stand to benefit from any of them, just via docket, communication, and the like. Okay. Sorry to get into the weeds there a little bit. Are there any other questions on the Charter Review Commission, commission candidates, et cetera? Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you. Since David DiCaprio is here, and he applied for the commission, I'd like him to speak to his strengths and why he desires to be on this commission.
Certainly. The green light is on? Name and address for the record.
Green light. My name is David DiCaprio. I reside at 12700 Lake Road, otherwise known as the Winton Place. I lived in Lakewood previously and raised a family, and I left and went elsewhere, came back within the last year or so, actually. It was better than a year. And I talked to Cindy, Cindy Marks, about serving voluntarily for the city in some capacity. As a resident in Rocky River, I served on the, in the building department, on the Board of Variance for seven years, and I also was asked by the mayor to serve on the Charter Review Commission in Rocky River several years ago. I chaired that committee. And in talking to Cindy, I told her that if anybody was interested in using my experience, that I'd be glad to talk to you folks.
Very good. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Mr. DiCaprio?
Oh, just thank you for coming out and applying, and excited that you're back in the community. It's great meeting ya over the past few months, and great seeing you around. So we're glad you're back in Lakewood and ready to dive in.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And should there be a more uniform application process posted or what have you, be sure to apply there for any information you haven't already submitted?
Yeah, Maureen has, Maureen has all of that.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anything else to add, colleagues, to this discussion, acknowledging we aren't making any appointments or adjusted appointments this evening?
Just that we only have a few precious meetings left in the year, so we're looking to get this done, just keeping that in mind. Busy, busy calendar, starting this next meeting on out, so...
Absolutely, and we're cramming this one in as it is. So acknowledged, we may need some alternative meeting times at times to get things in, much to the chagrin of our council staff, I have to imagine. At any rate, we'll table that agenda item, and then perhaps have roughly a 15-minute or so discussion on the resolution related to the frontage of the former Lakewood Hospital site, and for that... I'd defer to my colleagues, I believe it was Councilman Bullock who had proposed this initially, and Marks, thank you. Whichever of you would like to open things up.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So this is intended to get the discussion begun. We, you know, I, first to my colleagues, love your feedback on the concept of what's here. The, there needs to be, in addition to City Council discussion about whether, you know, you see the, you agree with the proposed need and solution, there needs to be some detail put into, or at least discussed, you know, what are we talking about here? In other words, you know, I've had a little bit of informal discussion with Director Lineiger, who I think would be in the front lines, really, of this, or perhaps Director Lineiger together with Director Gordon. So we're not very far along on any of that. But the, but I think that there's potentially a way to be cost-conscious. You know, it sounds like the administration was already contemplating a wrap on the fencing. That certainly is a step forward, although it could be an ugly wrap, it could be a nicely colored wrap, it could be a wrap with some graphics on it, or a plain one at first and graphics later. Those are the kind of design details that this draft doesn't attempt to get into on purpose, because there should be some discretion, in my opinion, allowed to the design professionals. The other thing would be, you could potentially add street furniture, like park benches, like a refuse bin, and some usability to the site. That would need to be reviewed for, you know, is there room on the sidewalk? There may not be without moving the fence, or moving a portion of the fence, maybe there could be an inset. But that needs a little bit of study, because how much does that cost? I don't think it would cost a reasonable amount, but what's the ground underneath it involve? So none of that kind of an analysis has been done to this point, since, of course, City Council works through public meetings, this is the initial proposal. You could also keep it small on Detroit Avenue, relatively small on Detroit Avenue, or you could contemplate Bell and Marlowe. could contemplate Bell and Marlowe for a short distance or a long distance. If you did the latter, you would probably need relatively more funds, and that's something to discuss. But as you may recall from the communication that Councilwoman Marks and I put on the docket, it's not on this agenda, but was on the full council docket, what we're proposing here is decidedly not permanent things, not access to the site, not expensive things or things like street trees that'll take years and years to establish because we anticipate this is a temporary step for six months to 24 months, you know, while we await action on the site. So that's about it. So it's a discussion point. $150,000 might be expensive, but there could be versions where that's not ample enough so that amount also could be subject to council's discussion. I do think that the reuse of elements would be responsive to any concerns about investing taxpayer dollars on a site that is going to change, we know, sooner or later. The spirit of the proposal is though that sooner has become later, we're already on four years, and because of circumstances beyond our control such as the financial markets, we don't know how soon sooner will be with our current development partner because interest rates are high, materials costs are high, et cetera. So, and, and we still haven't gotten through all of the approvals, the design detail, and the, after the approvals, there's going to need to be other documents like development agreement, design, you know, blueprints. There's a lot of work to do, you know, even if, even if today, even if tomorrow we got all that approved, there's going to be a time delay between having all the paperwork in place, shovels breaking ground, ribbons being cut. So the intent would be to, to get started now on beautifying the site for all kinds of good reasons.
Councilwoman Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that in lieu of the communication, the desire was to really create an opportunity to make the community aware that this is not a wasteland, you know, and it's somewhat become a bit of a joke for people. And I think for the city to embrace it as a work in progress would be important. And however we can beautify it so, we can be proud of the future development that's coming. And we don't know when that's going to start, but I think rather than just having a fence with, you know, a vacant lot behind it, it's just a message that, you know, this is not going anywhere right now. So I think if we can do something to beautify the streetscape right there in downtown Lakewood, it would serve the community well, and people would appreciate that. And I agree with Councilman Bullock, we're not talking about spending lots of money, but there are many ways that you can be creative to make it look still inviting for the community. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Planning Director Leininger, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
Thank you, Council President Litten. To Councilman Bullock's point, we have had some conversations about how we can take these steps in the past. And it's always been, as we're working with our developer and trying to get them along in the process, thinking that, well, we're a couple approvals away from being able to put the big, the big wrap on there that announces Casto, announces the development, has renderings of development. And unfortunately, as you all know, along the way, that time seems to keep running away from us, or that point in time keeps, seems to keep running away from us. But we have had conversations about how we can wrap the site. And short of whether, if it's Casto and putting something together through a developer, what can we do from the city's standpoint to wrap it? How can we bring some color and some interest into that wrap so it's not just a black mesh wrap around the, around the site that you see in many other communities? As we've looked at it, and you mentioned Detroit, we have actually looked at taking it, not all the way around, because we want to make sure it's still a defensible space for our, for our law enforcement, not there's anything bad happening there, but if something is going on, we won't be able to see it. But we've looked at carrying it all the way down the residential property because our residents are also looking into that site as well, not just our businesses and visitors on Detroit. So there's been a lot of ideas out there, whether it's public art, whether it's images of the city, whether it's something else. We just haven't gotten to, it's always that fleeting moment. So appreciate the ability to put some, some money towards this, where you continue to work with Casto. Casto might be sooner than we, than we think. That's, of course, me sitting here right now, and based on what I know right now. But, but we're certainly willing to and open to continue the discussion. I think some of the onsite stuff, the fencing, it's probably a little bit harder, given there's going to be an active construction site. So the wrap seems to make the most sense.
And I acknowledge that until you have, you know, renderings that you can at least somewhat rely upon doing a wrap that includes that in any fashion is, is going to be delayed, or some time incoming anyway.
Yeah, we just have visions of the Mission Impossible banner. We don't want to put that early, Mission Completed banner up. We don't want to have that.
Yeah, Mission Accomplished, I believe is what you're getting at. And I, unfortunately, we may have actually tried that on this site.
That was before me, so.
To some extent, yeah. Been around too long, I suppose. And the site has as well. Further comments, colleagues?
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Reader.
Thank you. And actually, I really appreciate most probably, no offense to whatsoever, but City Marks, you know, this is my neighborhood too, and to have to sort of stare at this, of course, I'm of two minds, to keep it vacant is really no, like, cost to the city. Curtis Block notwithstanding, we won't talk about, like, we'll leave that for a separate conversation. There is a cost to letting that building degrade. However, you know, having a usable park space there in the meantime, while portions of the property are being developed, I think would be a huge asset to our neighborhood. And so much so that I think it might even outweigh some of the costs, additional costs of filling that, bringing that property to grade, just to have that space usable instead of a, you know, it's eyesoreness doesn't, is less, you know, important than its opportunity cost lost, by not having that as something we could walk our pets in, and we could have it as a, you know, a soccer field for the neighborhood. We use St. Charles Park or a Bernice Pike Park for all kinds of things now that it was made a park, but I could really see the neighborhood utilizing that space in the meantime. You know, not too dissimilar to what happened in Ward 4 with the 117 Street Studios, using that space that was the NTP Tire as a parking lot. I think that's a good use for the overflow parking there. You know, not suggesting we make this a parking lot, again, my, my thought is a park. But, but the last thing I'll say, I think Councilwoman-elect Strabig had some great points about re-engaging the community around this. You know, she's the one knocking the doors around that, you know, your successor, you've done a phenomenal job of getting us to this point, and I think she's ready to sort of take that mantle. And I look forward to sort of engaging her in this process and the community again, to really figure out how we, and I do think we need to do something. But I think it's more than just wrapping the fence. It's my two cents. Right, that's all. Thank you.
On some level, and window dressing is not the right word, but, but we are talking about temporary solutions to what is a long-term challenge to our city. I sit here pretty convinced that between developer and the administration and my colleagues, we're all focused on moving this as quickly as we possibly can. There's a lot of aspects of this we can't push across the finish line on our own. They're going to take further discussion and further committee discussion, further probably city commission discussions and, you know, potential tenants and things like that that need to be discussed. I can't wait for those discussions to occur, even if I'm not here for them. But I, I do think anything that, you know, my colleagues suggest in terms of ways to just mitigate what it is right now in any way we possibly can for the sake of our community, and also to re-engage our community in the process of doing so, would be welcomed.
Mr. Chair, unless Councilman Schachner wants to get on the record about this irrevocably right now. The two thoughts, one is sooner is better, in my opinion, so I get the point that if we're imminent with graphics, why, you know, spend money on a wrap? I think we could solve for that, right? You could put a decal on a wrap, or you could put a sign in front of a wrap or something. I hope, right? Secondly, hopefully, if there's police views that are needed, I'm glad to hear that the administration's putting some thought to the residential neighbors' impacts of that view. You could put a gap every so often, right? Okay, so there could be windows, in other words, for the police to be able to see eyes on, and that's very prudent. Third, you know, I do, I do want to, so let's say for the moment if the wrap and not addressing the fence is, you know, the recommendation that the administration's going to make, and I could understand potentially why, there's still, that still may not eliminate other beautification elements like planters, like plantains, probably planters, some kind of usable street furniture, some kind of refuse bins, I don't know. But let's not, from the initial concept here, eliminate entirely things that go beyond wraps because we don't know how long we're going to be with the site. And even if this, if construction were to break ground in spring, in the warm, the first warm weather of 2024, the whole site is not going to be built out in a short time period. It's going to be an extensive time period. It may well be beyond 2024 before that project is completely completed. And even if it's not in 20, if it's done in nine months, that's still a long time for the community to continue looking at that. It probably is, the sensitivity to that is enhanced because we're starting this discussion in year four, or at the end of year four. You know what I mean? So the patience for living with the partner dust is probably exhausted a while ago. So I just, as we communicate flexibility, I personally continue to look for urgency of timely action. We could use the cold winter months to come up with at least some initial step that could be done on a timely basis as soon as possible in 2024, and then phase in other stuff. You know, maybe that would be a great approach, at a minimum a wrap, and then you could add planters, and then if it made sense, because we think we're still going to be with the site unimproved in significant stretches of it, you could have time for a simple public art RFP, for example. Maybe, maybe public art doesn't make any sense, but the point is, is that that's a more involved step. And if it turns out in 2024 that we have more time for additional phases, we could take that approach too. It's highly pragmatic, but it's, I think, the point that Councilwoman Marks is saying, that we want to communicate to the public that we care for it, that there's a future for the site, and we're communicating that, not just with words in a council meeting, but, but with actions that everybody's going to see every day as they drive by. So that's about it.
Thanks. Councilwoman Marks.
Thank you. If I could just say one thing, it can be done relative, relatively with little expense. You know, what if you hung flower boxes along the fence? I mean, flowers do a lot to brighten the community. We see the difference it makes down Detroit Avenue with the flower boxes in front of the businesses. That's a low-cost item, but it looks like there's life there. And I think, I think it's just something to consider so the public can be proud of that space and not embarrassed by it until we can, we know kind of where we're going. And I believe taking our time and making this decision about the development is important. I don't want to just move forward with the development and end up with another Marks Plaza. So it's worth taking the time, but until that happens, embrace the space and make people proud of the fact that Lakewood is thoughtful about its development.
There can only be one Marks Plaza? I said there can only be one Marks Plaza.
Chairman, you have a design background, don't you? You could put your pen to paper. Could we have the Council President Litten design scheme for this?
Sure. Sure, sure. What I appreciate about this entire discussion, though, is that even as we potentially defer this item for the time being, the conversation has begun, you know, ideas can flow, the administration can move forward with aspects of improving the site as we discuss them this evening, and it doesn't have to take a resolution passing or what have you to make that, make that occur. Any further discussion for the moment on this item? I'd only like to add, as we discussed, the Charter Review Commission, I wanted to acknowledge Stephen Davis, who passed, who was an integral member of that commission over the, over the years, someone with whom I often disagreed with politically and on matters of Lakewood, but who was so dedicated to the process of, of looking closely at our charter and making sure we had the best charter we could in the, in the times that we were in during that time. So I wanted to acknowledge his service. Any further discussion?
Hearing none. Councilman Bullock? I can't make my button work. Okay, so where does that leave this proposal?
I think it remains in this committee for continued discussion.
Okay.
And we're going to have to meet again, anyway.
Yeah, certainly. And can we, is there a potential consensus that might be identified with the administration and the committee of the whole between now and December 31, such that we could get a vote out on this proposal? I hope so. I mean, I think it's, it sounds like it might be possible, if we had some more informal discussion prior to whenever next fit on your calendar.
Between the next meeting.
I just kind of want to get, take a temperature of, of everyone.
Are you looking for a, sorry.
Please.
Are you looking for a proposal, or if you?
Trying to find out if you want to pound the table in opposition to this proposal. Does the administration have any stark objections to this proposal if council were to workshop it and potentially consider it for adoption between now and December 31, if that was the will of the committee?
No, no one has an objection to the proposal. It's something that, as I shared, is something we've been cognizant of and have taken steps to try to think about, but for various reasons just have not implemented it yet.
And any feedback on the number 150?
So that's, I don't, so I'm not the finance director. I don't know where that number's coming from. It didn't specify a source.
Just a starting point, throw a dart at the board.
Well, a wrap will not cost anywhere near $150,000 based on estimates that are probably a couple of years old, that those are probably higher now. And I don't, I don't want to check the durability of the material we were proposing versus what the school did, because that's holding up very well.
A wrap plus flower boxes?
I think the flower box conversation, that, that's something we need to go back to and talk with Chris Gordon, because someone's got to maintain those flower boxes.
I understand.
Our guys are stretched, the beautification committees, our Keep Lakewood Beautiful, all the garden clubs there, they've cried uncle to us on some other things that we've, we've had conversation with them about. So I think conceptually, I mean, we have no problem with doing something. It's a matter of, are you looking for a proposal, you just want to, or are you just going to set the funds up?
I mean, I, nothing's going to grow for the next five months, so you've got some time on flower boxes, I think. But the wrap, I think, is something to contemplate now from a financial standpoint. I think from the planter box, flower box standpoint, Keep Lakewood Beautiful could be a wonderful resource, especially if they knew it was in a temporary fashion, a largely volunteer-driven piece of the city that I think operates pretty well and does the adopt of spots and things like that. You might have a lot of surrounding residents there who'd be very interested in a short-term sense of volunteering around that site and things like that as well. But again, that's an April conversation or a March conversation for April or something like that, I think, not, unless we're planning fake stuff, which is not, not very Lakewood, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, just, just the one, we certainly
Tableting that part of it. Go ahead.
We certainly do have time to get into those details. What I think would be constructive is if there could be council support to send that signal so that the administration's clear that council wants something done in response to the community and can make use of January, February, et cetera, to do a little due diligence with that, and knows that there would be funds available. The discretion The discretion, you know, I just spoke at length in the Finance Committee about giving council more controls. In this case, this is crafted to give maximum discretion to the administration, which is up to $150,000. That could include zero dollars, you know? The design elements are not specified at all. So that's intentional, because this is not intended to micromanage the design elements, but it would be an expression of support if council were to support it. So my hope is that that broad approach could attract a majority's support by council, you know? But I certainly look to you and to the administration to do some informal feedback, and if we were to bring it back again before December 31, you know, that might be the best of all worlds.
Yes, and I guess perhaps prior to another meeting about the topic, you know, I would like to understand maybe the timeline for the wrap piece in terms of, you know, if you order it now, can you decide on the design in January? And thus, we've at least started the process that, where the details of which could be determined later, but the order could be made knowing that there's timelines for things, and they can take some time, and we can get ahead of things.
Just briefly, right now, I'm pretty much a lean no vote on this. And I would say, I would be unlikely to support anything additional to what the administration already has planned in terms of a wrap. To me, and this is just my own personal view, it looks like it's throwing up the white flag, that this is something that's an abject failure on the part of the city. We're giving up, so we're going to dress it up as much as possible and hope people, I know this is not the intent, I'm just saying, to me, it just seems that we're going to dress it up and hope people forget that nothing's there. I mean, nothing's there, we're working on it. We, I mean, I've done my part in the past year, I know other members of council have too, over the past two, three, four years, of explaining the difficulties to our residents in developing the site. And that, I know that city council is doing its absolute best in everything within our limited power in approving what the administration brings forward, to hoping to streamline the process, be open to conversations with the developer, to being flexible. But at this point, it, and I think it's fair to say that people around the city and our constituents see this as a failure on the part of Lakewood as it is currently. And I think our focus should remain being in making sure we do the right thing by that site, do the right thing by that location and the history of it, and put our focus and energy there. And from what I'm hearing is that there's already plans from the administration to do at least clean it up in terms of a wrap, and some hopeful signage in the future. But at this point, I don't want to throw good money after bad just because nothing is there currently. I am hopeful that something will be there soon, and I don't want to send a message to our residents that this is it.
Fair enough. There may be some answer in between $150,000 and zero that does something to mitigate what's there. And I'm confident that even informally, that may occur, even if not formally through a resolution through this body. But for now, I think we'll defer this item for another committee meeting. Any further discussion or questions or comments on any of the three agenda items this evening? Okay. All right, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.